Council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins is here. Alderman Dow. Dow is here. Alderman King. Alderman Harris. Oh, did she say present? I did not hear. Okay. Got you. Got you, Alderman King.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Alderman Harrison. Harrison is present. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris. Harris is present. Alderman Beal. Beal is present. Alderman Zloski Garza. Zloski Garza is present. Alderman Thompson. Thompson is present. Alderman Cardenas. Alderman Cardenas. Cardenas is present. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is present. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Lopez is present. Alderman Coleman. Coleman is present. Alderman Moore. Moore is present. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is present. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is present. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is present. Alderman Scott. Scott is present. Alderman Sechel Lopez. Sechel Lopez is present. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is present. Alderman Urban. Urban is present. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is present. Alderman Raboyas. Raboyas is present. Alderman Cardona. Cardona is present. Alderman Waguspac. Waguspac is present. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is present. Alderman Austin. Austin is present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is present. Alderman Vegas. Vegas is present. Alderman Mitts. Mitts is present. Alderman Spisato. Spisato is present. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is present. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is present. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley. Alderman Riley. Riley is present. Alderman Smith. Smith is present. Alderman Tunny. Tunny is present. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is present. Alderman Capelman. Capelman is present. Alderman Martin. Martin is present. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is present. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is present. Alderman Silverstein. I saw her. Silverstein is present. Alderman Maldonado is present.
Alderman Laspada is present.
Alderman Laspada is present. Alderman Curtis is present. Any others?
There are 45 members present. We have a quorum. Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered by Reverend Charlene Hill from the United Church of Hyattville. Reverend, the floor is yours.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Benevolent God, God of the indigenous, God of the immigrant, the stolen and lost people, citizens and creation. Lord, dear Lord above, God almighty, please look down and see your people through. Bring water to the thirsty and balm to the weary and rest to those who are tired. For this meeting today, help us enter in and stay on track. Help us continue to serve our constituents. We ask for wisdom as we make some tough decisions in this meeting. Remind us in heated moments, even though we are not always on the same side, we are on the same team. Help us to carefully consider the relevant information that has been gathered. Help us to hear beyond our own distraction and biases. Help us to make the best decisions for those we serve. Help us to bring all something to the table and help us to appreciate what others bring to the table as well. Let us hear and value each other. Give us clarity and energy to sit through one more meeting. An important meeting. The budget meeting. Hold all that we love in your loving hands, our constituents, our communities, our families and our loved ones. In good moments and challenging times, keep us rooted in purpose and our faith. This public service work is not for the faint of heart. So let us be as intentional in our play and rest as we are in our service to this city. Dear Lord, Lord God above, God of love, please look down and see your people through. Bless our city, bless our public servants and bless our people. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's time for public comment. Mr. Clerk.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and been available for aldermatic review. Our first speaker is Susanna Anthony.
Good morning. At the end of 2016, the Office of the Inspector General conducted an investigation of the Chicago Department of Public Health and found the following, and I quote. "OIG concludes that CDPH does not have the staff resources necessary to conduct routine inspections as frequently as required under the standards prescribed by state law. We estimate that CDPH needs at least 56 additional sanitarians to conduct the legally required number of food inspections. CDPH's inability to meet the state standards not only undermines public trust in the city's capacity to fulfill this fundamental local governmental function, it also places at risk millions of dollars in annual state grant funding. The OIG also stated the city should consider funding additional sanitarians from the fee, fine and license revenue generated by food inspection operations. Women's slaughter house is cited for a critical violation. They are fined $500 per incident and $250 for each serious violation. Considering that most are only inspected once a year are not even that. For instance, six of the 13 type two Chicago slaughter houses were not inspected in 2020 and some of them have not since May 2019. These fines are a drop in the bucket for these establishments and do not serve as an incentive to follow the food code rules. What is considered minor violations are not fined at all, not even if an inspection signs multiple such violations. Reinspection fees are currently $100, which does not even cover the cost of having an inspector come out again. Infrequent inspections and low fines and fees encourage slaughter houses to keep operating under highly unsanitary conditions and neglecting and abusing the animals who are unfortunately unfortunate to end up there. Slaughter Free Chicago recently investigated seven live poultry places in Chicago and submitted reports along with photographic evidence to Commissioner Awady, Chief Sanitarian Castaneda and IDA Director Costello detailing a myriad of food code violations and horrific animal cruelty. To date, we have not received a response to these shocking reports. One small thing that you as city council members can do to make it more difficult for Chicago slaughter houses to blatantly ignore the food code rules, operate under squalid conditions and not even provide a minimum of care to animals is to recommend that fines for violations and fees for reinspections are exponentially increased. This money should be used to fund additional inspectors to bring CDPH into compliance. Now, don't get me wrong, I don't believe that slaughter houses that operate right next to or below residences should be allowed to operate at all. And the right thing to do, given their persistent noncompliance with the law, should be for CDPH to.
Thank you, Ms. Anthony. Thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Hong Liu.
Good morning. We are very excited for Mayo's budget proposal to increase $80 million to increase access to mental health services in the city of Chicago. Mental health is a key factor in our recovery from a COVID-19 pandemic. Based on the research data and literature, mental health problems are very common in children and the youth from all family types and the cultural backgrounds. According to CDC, more than one in three high school students had experienced the feelings of sadness, stress or anxiety in 2019. A 40% increase since 2009. About one in seven young people or 14% will experience a mental health illnesses at some point. Suicide-related behaviors are also a growing problem for adolescents. In 2019, approximately one in six youth reported making a suicide plan in the past year. A 44% increase since 2009. We know that nearly every person struggles with their mental health at some point in life. The COVID-19 pandemic combined with isolation and the violation have impacted everyone's mental health. As the only Asian mental health community center in the south side of Chicago, the Midwest Asian Health Association Mental Health Program is honored to partner with the city of Chicago for the Trauma Informed Care Program to reduce mental health disparities in the Asian immigrants and refugee communities. Due to the pandemic, hate crime and discrimination, Asian populations are more likely to experience mental health stress, fear, anxiety and isolation. It is very important to increase access to mental health services that are language appropriate and culturally competent to serve the population who are facing language and the cultural barriers to healthcare. We greatly appreciate Mayo's continued support and advocacy for the mental health budget. Mayo Lightfoot clearly sees the importance in making sure the mental health prevention is funded and we know she understands the issues and how the mental health problems impacted the people in Chicago. This additional support to expand the mental health budget is coming at a critical time. On behalf of the Midwest Asian Health Association, Maha, we thank and support Mayo's commitment to increasing funding resources for mental health services. We look forward to working with the Mayo's team to ensure these investments have the most positive impact on people's life in Chicago. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Liu, for your comments. Our next speaker is Dennis Mondero.
Mayor Lightfoot and members of the city council. I'm Dennis Mondero, Executive Director of CMAA, Chinese Mutual Aid Association. This year marks our 40th anniversary as a nonprofit organization helping immigrants and refugees. Our agency, proudly led by board members of Chinese, Filipino, South Asian Indian, Korean and Vietnamese descent, is proud of our contribution of our contribution to the ethnically diverse uptown community where we serve immigrants from Asia, Africa, Eastern Europe and Central and South America. And I'm proud that the Asian American community has now risen to 8% of the city's population according to the 2020 census. This past year, marked by the global pandemic and our country's racial reckoning, it has been challenging to my agency and to my community. I have over 200 coworkers who are deemed essential frontline workers and I applaud them for bravely wearing their PPE daily to directly serve the elderly and the weak. I applaud my colleagues for so much of what they do daily for the community, like my coworker Alan Wong, who assisted a retired client who was being discriminated against for months by a racist neighbor spewing anti-Asian hate. Our agency is proud to be a partner with the Department of Family and Support Services, receiving funding to help workforce and youth programming. We're also proud to be a delegate agency for the Department of Housing and Commissioner Marissa Navarro's ERAP program, where we are helping distribute rental assistance funds to low-income Chicago residents affected by COVID. That program is preventing Chicagoans from becoming evicted in these uncertain times. I applaud you, Mayor Lightfoot, for your dedication and thoughtfulness, guiding our city through so many truly arduous challenges in these unprecedented times. I want to thank 48th Ward Alderman Harry Osterman as well, because Harry has been a true friend to the Asian American immigrant community. The choices you all make are difficult and impact millions of people. It's easy to be a critic. It's harder to be in the arena, holding the mantle for how to best lead all in our community. I'm proud that Mayor Lightfoot is holding the mantle, leading our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mondero, for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
This concludes the public comment period. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, communications. Madam Clerk.
Communications from our honor, the mayor, to the honorable City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development are transmit here with ordinances authorizing the budget scope of services and service provider agreements for various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance is will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Command Economic Capital Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing are transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended multifamily loan agreement with 43rd and Calumet Phase 1 LP for affordable housing development. For your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Buildings are transmit here with an ordinance amending the municipal code regarding certificate of occupancy. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the city council that the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Notification from Alderman O'Shea and Alderman Cardona of intent to vote yes on motion to suspend rules regarding ordinance 02021-4831 and notification from Alderman Raboyas of intent to vote yes on motion to suspend rules regarding ordinance 02021-4831. City Clerk publications. Oh, I City Clerk Valencia also informed the city council that all those matters were considered by the city council at the regular meeting held on October 25, 2021, and which were required by state statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers or published in pamphlet form on October 27, 2021, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings of the city council of the city of Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications or reports requiring city council action. Claims against the city of Chicago which refer to the Committee on Finance and correction of October 14, 2021, city council journal proceedings which is referred to the Committee on Committees Rules.
The chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I move to suspend the rules to consider various items of unfinished business, which were noticed and filed with the clerk pursuant to Rule 41, pertinent to consideration and passage of the 2022 budget. They are as follows. Number one, the 2022 Code Corrections Ordinance. Number two, the 2022 Salary Resolution. Number three, the 2022 Substitute Management Ordinance. Number four, the 2022 Motor Fuel Tax Allocation. Number five, the 2022 Motor Fuel Tax Allocation Intergovernmental Agreement with the Chicago Transit Authority in Cook County. Number six, amendments to the 2021 Annual Appropriation Ordinance. Number seven, a series of corrections and revisions to the 2022 Annual Appropriation Ordinance. Number eight, the 2022 Annual Appropriation Ordinance as amended. Number nine, the General Obligation Bonds and Additional Sales Tax Bonds Ordinance. Number 10, the 2022 Revenue Ordinance. And number 11, the 2022 Tax Levy Ordinance.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
I ask that the council discuss at this time the entire budget package, which consists of the various matters I just identified. I reserve my right and Alderman Waguspac's right to close the discussion.
Chairman Dow. Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. For all that I haven't seen this morning, good morning. Madam President, I want to first thank you for allowing me to offer a prayer over our council the other day. When I stood before the council and asked for prayer, I wanted to go in another direction and talk about the budget and I told myself as I was praying, it's not the time. So I can come today, Madam President, and say this is the time. We went over this budget over and over with the finance team. Suzie, you carry a big stick. When it was time to move, you did. When it was time to bend, you did. When it was time to steadfast, you did. And that's the entire team. That's a great team that you have, Jenny. I think I wanted to extract some more money out of you, but you wasn't budgeted. But for all that we have went through, and I have to say this, that we went through some trying times in the past. These are trying times now. But nevertheless, we have to pass a budget. No matter what, no matter what we want, no matter how many I wants, no matter how many you need to do. This is the time that we have discussed, we've went over, we've asked every department. I was hoping we could extract some more out of the police department. But also children and family services. We were able to get out of this, what, mental health? We have been striving for that for the longest, but it has come to pass. So everybody have some yeses, I want this, some no's, I don't want that. But in all, we need to stick to our word, which we have given. Oh, I'm all right with that. I'm all right with this. And when you can say that at any one of those hearings that we've been in, stick to your word. Don't come back now and say, well, I didn't really like it. I want something different. I want to do this, I want to do that. Because if the mayor could pull out of her hat as many millions of dollars that we have asked for, I know that she would. But for what we have discussed in these two weeks, and as the minister said, Lord, another meeting. And this is the one that really counts. Because this is what we impart upon the people that voted for us. This is the time that we have to give until it hurts. But you're giving to support the people that you represent. Now that should be something that you want to look at. We've done this millions of times, some of us, I don't know about millions, but hundreds. I know 11. So I'll talk about 32. So we've all been through some extracting hard budgets. Well, I don't like this. Neither do I. But I know who it will affect. It will affect the people that have put all of us in these seats. Chairman Dow. I thought I was the stronger one, but you held your ground. And you held your ground for every Alderman that had a question, that had, I want, I need this, I need that. I want this information. And you made sure that they were receiving that information at the end of the day or no later than the end of the week. So thank you for that strength. For all the Aldermans that had, well, I got one more question, like David Moore. I got one more question. But thank you for that one more question, David. Because something came out of that one more question. Because somebody else had a question that they had not thought of that you brought up. So for everybody that get up and have something to say. Well, I didn't get this and I didn't get that. I beg to differ with you. Because I can say that our chairman has been open and extremely fair. There was nothing that you could have asked for in information that she didn't supply us with or that she didn't ask the finance team to supply us with. Madam Mayor. These are trying times for all of us. I know they are for you, but I know that you've done 100% for the people that elected you. And for that, I'm forever grateful. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam. The chair recognizes Alderman Mitts.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support the budget. And normally I would have a strip that I could read from, but I can tell you, and just going through the budget from A through Z with all the departments that represents in between. There is something for everyone. I'm happy to be able to know that there are going to be programs to help our homeless, help our children, help our families. I'm happy to be able to know that I can work with streets and sand, get more garbage cans, be able to service my constituents. I'm happy to be able to know I can work with tree trimming to get those trees cut in the neighborhood. And I don't let, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to be able to know that we have opportunity for housing. People need housing. We need to be able to help our communities, help folks that need the help. And my whole goal has always been, can we help the least of these? It's a lot of least of these out there. No matter what we have and how much money we got, if we just look around us, we'll see people are hurting every single day. And all we need to do is take time out and get out of ourselves and look at the world that's surrounding us, our seniors. There are programs to help them. So I would encourage us to really look at the budget and the money that's there and go and advocate for it for your community. A closed mouth never get fed. So we need to open our mouth and go in. And my whole goal, and I tell them, let's dig in, let's not complain. Because you don't, complain never get you anything. Let's go in, work and see what we can have and try to help our community. So I am in support of the budget. There are a lot of great things in the budget for our youth, jobs, opportunities. That's all we need, one opportunity. So I am grateful to be able to work with the city council. Thank you, Madam Chairman Dow, for running the budget, even in the midst of the pandemic. You did an excellent job. You never, I never hardly saw you ask for someone else to take over for you. You stood there and weathered the storm. Two weeks. And that is a lot for a budget chair. And if you don't believe it, try walking in the shoes and you'll find out. That's not an easy job. But somebody has to do it. And thank God we have you here to carry that load for us and get us through to this point. Hoping we realize all the work was not in vain. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Mitts. If members of the body want to speak to this, please raise your hands. I'm not seeing a lot of hands raised. So we're going to whip through the ones that have and then we're going to go to vote. Next up, the chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I think that in this time, we had to do a tight walk between what is fiscally responsible for the city and investing in communities that need that. And I think that this budget has done a great job of balancing and walking that tightrope. Something that is, I've heard you say many times, and I know many of the Aldermen, they say that violence is the problem that we have in the city. And I think that this budget takes a down payment. And I think that this budget takes a down payment on trying to solve some of those issues. $50 million for street intervention, which is a great increase in what has been seen in years past. To have people to go out and engage with our communities that do not have that opportunity for jobs and back in school, I think is really important. An additional $12 million in Masha My Future in building hubs all across the city of Chicago for our young people to have a place to engage and do things that are necessary, do things that are constructive instead of doing things that are destructive. Investment in mental health services. And that has been a cry for many of us in this body for quite some time. To be able to invest in those, I think is really important. But again, there has been a great balancing act of walking that tightrope to make sure that we invest in these communities, but still do not saddle generations in the future with the burden of what we're doing today. You know, I would be remiss without thanking Chairman Dow like everybody else did. She has done a masterful job of making sure that all of our questions have been answered. You know, I think she said something about over 1,000 through the chair requests have been answered. And there, I think 20 or 30 that have not been answered. That is a marvelous job for her and her staff. And so I want to commend her for the job that she's done. I also want to thank and congratulate your financial team, who has been there each and every day that we've called on the phone, meeting well before this, talking about a lot of the concerns that us as aldermen have had, that we've been addressed through our communities. And so I appreciate that. I think more so than any time I've been an alderman, to have these meetings and to be able to engage with your team has been really thoughtful and really important to me as an alderman. And so I want to thank you for your willingness to work with us on this budget and not to lump all of it towards, towards the future, but making sure that there are investments for today. And so for that, I will be voting yes. And again, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. The chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I also like the rise in support of this budget. First of all, I think this is a very holistic budget. I like to commend the three ladies that you have over there. They remind me of Charlie's Angels. We need to call them Lori's Angels over there, the three of them. We also like to commend Chairman Dow, who did such a great job asking all of us for our opinions, things that we liked and didn't like, taking it to the different departments to see if things could be changed. We really appreciate it. We've been in so many meetings in reference to this budget that I think any and everything that everyone asked got answered. But also, early on, they were asking us our ideas. Matter of fact, they took it to the neighborhood. And I was in a community meeting over at Malcolm X College with folks from the neighborhood where they asked us our ideas. Then I also went to another community meeting over at Garfield Park, and they asked the community their ideas. So everyone had an input into this budget, not just in the city council, people in the neighborhood. Matter of fact, probably folks in your neighborhoods that you didn't even know who was from your neighborhood that was in meetings and giving recommendations and asking for things in relationship to this budget. And you all took all of those things into consideration. And I see it in the budget. A lot of the things that were asked were bottom line, holistic things that affect our community. Things about homelessness. You dealt with homelessness in this budget. You dealt with housing in this budget. You dealt with mental illness in this budget. You dealt with youth in this budget. Also, violence prevention, something that's very sorely needed more and more in our community to also help our police officers. Also, you even took it an extra mile. And you set aside some money for us to be able to fund, help to fund other organizations that we see fit to fund in our community. And I appreciate that. But also, most of all, Mayor, I appreciate what you're doing for returning citizens. I appreciate the fact that you asked me to be on the task force. I want to thank Dan Lar and all of the people, Will, and all of the other folks upstairs in the policy section of your office, who brought together a conglomerate of social agencies that deal with returning citizens. But not only that, you brought a lot of returning citizens to the table. A lot of people who been in prison, been out of, that's out of prison, and you listened to their challenges and their concerns about when they come home, what they had to deal with, what would allow them to be able to stay out here and be productive citizens in our society. And you took all those things to heart. You put money where your mouth is. You put money on the table for returning citizens. And from what I understand, there's going to be someone hired in your administration to just specifically deal with returning citizens. So I want to say thank you, Mayor, on behalf of all the returning citizens out here in our society, because people don't recognize the fact that every returning citizen is somebody's, either somebody's son, daughter, mother, father, sister, brother. It affects everyone in our society. And if they do good, we all do good. If they come back to our community as productive citizens, our city is a better place to live. So I want to commend you on that. I want to commend you on this budget. You know, it may not be a perfect budget. No budget is perfect. You know, we still have to do what we have to do to make things happen, but we're moving in the right direction. And you're touching the heart of our community. And I just want to say thank you and I support this budget.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. The chair recognizes Alderman Vasken. Alderman Vasken.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank our city workers that were a part of this process. In every one of our city's departments, we saw a resilience and diligence that needs to be commended, especially in light of the challenges they had to face through COVID. I'd like to thank all of the department's leadership for their engagement in our budget discussion. I'd also like to thank Chairwoman Pat Dow for presiding over this year's budget hearings. You've been masterful in keeping us focused and informed. I commend you for your patience, your discipline and endurance in chairing these hearings, and I'm proud to serve with you. To Susie Park and Jenny Bennett from the Office of Budget and Management, I want to thank you both for being so focused and exceptionally engaging in crafting this budget. Every budget season, I am impressed by and grateful for your precision and your incredibly hard work. As my colleagues know, this year, my office, with the help of many interns and volunteers in the 40th Ward, crafted a preliminary budget proposal based on our mid-year data, the first time an alderperson has done so in over 30 years. Having seen how much work goes into every step of that process, I am uniquely appreciative of all the work you both put in to create this document. It is even more inspiring to see women and women of color like yourselves leading our city. Thank you for listening to and engaging with the ward offices and for doing your best to shape a working group that aligned with what I had proposed to Mayor Lightfoot last year. Our city thanks you for your service. What we see reflected in this year's budget is a result of tense but productive negotiations with the Lightfoot administration. Once again, as we did last year, the Black and Latino caucuses led by the Progressive Caucus built a coalition together to come to the table. Our collective vision was clear. The funds provided by the federal government needed to be invested in the people of Chicago. This is what we have heard time and time again from our constituents, from grassroots groups, and from the people of our great city. They wanted us to invest in them. That's where these federally provided funds needed to go. Not in merely paying off debt when people in the present moment are suffering across our city, not in a time where the unhoused numbers are increasing daily, where families are as afraid of being evicted as they are anxious about their next meal, and where we are ignoring the root causes of many of our cities, many of the problems our city faces. No, in this moment, we need more than platitudes and promises. We need historic generational investment in writing. I'd like to let our neighbors in Chicago know that we have some amazing leaders that helped us come to this budget today. I'd like to thank my colleagues in the Progressive Caucus, the Latino Caucus, the Black Caucus, my comrades in the Democratic Socialist Caucus, and my fellow alders here for their engagement. The conversations I had with each of you help inform my perspective as I continue to make the case that we should reimagine what's possible. In the 2020 budget, after those discussions, we can be proud of what we fought to win for our people. We have meaningful, historic, once-in-a-generation investments in violence prevention, in public mental health, and in non-police crisis response. In this budget, we provide support for our unhoused populations, cash assistance for those families who needed to be sustained during a pandemic, support for our local businesses, and a landmark investment in our environment. I am proud to have negotiated to lead our city to transition to a more efficient way of tree trimming called area trim. With the increased investment in our city's tree trim crews, we will, over the next few years, be able to catch up on the backlog of requests, trim our trees block by block, and further support our city's canopy, which provides so much of what we love about living in Chicago. Better service for a better neighbor experience, this budget helps us get there. We have a long way to go to provide a budget that will truly address all the root causes of our city's challenges. But thanks to our caucus coalition, our course is pointed in the right direction. Many thanks to Manny Perez, Amanda Bolton, Lucia Bertoni Ledford, Benamino Capalupo, and the rest of the mayor's team for their hard work and dialogue. Having so many perspectives and strong wills that a negotiation is challenging for all, and I appreciate our discussions as we sought to find agreement through it all. Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot, for allowing your team to lead. You've got some really hardworking folks. We may not always agree, but it takes a certain level of commitment to our city to engage the way they do. I am thankful for their effort, and thank you for giving them the opportunity to show their skill. To our neighbors in the 40th Ward and across Chicago, thank you for enduring and pushing through this time with us. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for the opportunity to lead our city in this moment. Chicago is our everything, and together we can achieve anything. In closing, I'd like to paraphrase our city's greatest mayor, Harold Washington, who reminds us that our concern is to heal, our concern is to bring together. Together is how we will prosper past this pandemic to the promise of a greater Chicago. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Haddon. And by the way, folks, last call for speakers.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to say thank you, Mayor, for the budget that you've presented us and for the process that we've gone through in engagement. I want to also echo my colleagues' thanks for Chairwoman Dow. Thank you for leading an organized and professional budget process again this year. I feel like it gets more difficult each year, but we appreciate you. A big thank you to Director Park and to the entire budget and finance team, especially for the, I think, never, never before reached depths of community engagement that you guys went through and making sure that you brought community voice into this. As a representative of the 49th Ward, I stand to support the 2022 budget as amended because it's actually reflecting so much of what community has been asking us for. I appreciate the conversations that we've had, what we've been able to move and push to the edges here. I know that we won't always agree on the process of how we're funding every little detail, but I think that this is probably the strongest budget in my short time that we've seen in Chicago City Council in meeting the needs of our residents, in making sure that our working families, our children, our elders are taken care of. And it really puts forth a huge challenge to us for 2022 and 2023 that I look forward to working with you all to meet. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Alderman Haddon. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, members of the city council. Listening to some of the speeches today, I feel like Christmas has come early. Everyone seems to be getting what they want. We have a $16 billion spending spree going on. And in short order, followed by some of the return of scoop and toss on steroids. We have a budget that is grossly out of balance yet again. Mast and lies in paper, 600 pages long. A budget where, just like last year's budget, has thousands, 4,000 as a matter of fact, vacant positions that we're being asked to fully fund once again on the backs of our taxpayers with no plan to fill them, just so that this government can use that extra $300 million for cash flow purposes. We did the same hat trick last year to the tune of $194 million for vacancies that we never filled, for services we never provided, and for public safety we weren't able to accomplish. Get ready for more of the same next year. It's difficult being one of the few not to see all of the goodness in this budget. Having to continuously bring up the fact that we could have actually given our taxpayers a $300 million tax break if we had decided to merely end the vacancies in this budget, let alone all the other real inefficiencies and ineffective spending that we've incorporated in it. Madam President, I will be a no on these items because I believe we could have done better. As someone who attended almost every, attended every single budget meeting this season, as I did last year and as I've done for every year I've been here, I was looking forward to an expanded conversation, not just an earlier one, on how we could have made departments leaner, how we could have made departments better, how we could have safeguarded taxpayers' dollars in a way that would provide us with some stability moving forward while still trying to have those aspirational goals like universal basic income, like finally tackling the issue of whether or not to incorporate reparations, whether finally putting sustained funding to programs that can last beyond Uncle Joe's presidency. There's very little sustainability in some of these programs. And today is the first year of the automatic increases that will go on for the next half century approved by this body a year ago. The automatic tax increase associated with this budget is about $26 million this year for the misadjusted inflation number of 1.4%. Next year's inflation will be about 6%, which means we will be looking at a 100-plus-million-dollar automatic tax increase next year. But these discussions were not had. Our taxpayers, our residents are not waiting for it. They're not expecting it. And they certainly haven't had a 5% jump in their pay to brace them for what's going to come out of this council next. This matter should not proceed. This budget should be rethought. And as members of the committee voted no, and as members of finance voted no, I joined them in that effort. And I ask my colleagues to do the same. Because while it's great to spend money you never had on gifts you never dreamed, we all know what happens December 26th after Christmas. Those credit cards come due. And if your pay hasn't changed, if your paycheck hasn't increased, you're going to have a tough time paying for those presents that you bought for your family. We are at that point today, ladies and gentlemen. And I remember in my first budget, voting for what at that point was the largest tax increase of $550 million. We did it, and I did it, because we had to stop the unending borrowing and spending that is being laid on generations yet to be determined. We were getting to that point, only to now revert back to making it someone else's problem, our grandchildren's problem, just so that we can survive the day and get through the next election. I won't be a part of that, and I ask all of you to do the same. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Martin.
Thank you, Madam President. I know I'm not the only
I know I'm not the only one in this room or this building that felt a mix of both relief and thanks when ARPA passed federal government because it immediately became clear that we had a generational opportunity to invest in our communities, every single community throughout our city. And that came at a time when COVID was shining a spotlight on the real deficiencies in terms of our broader social service infrastructure, problems around affordable housing, access to mental health, among many others, were being exacerbated. We were hearing from constituents across our communities, across our cities, about how much they were hurting. I, along with so many others, were thankful when Chairwoman Dow, among others, put together a series of working groups to talk about the needs and then to create a through line in terms of what the solutions would be, both short, mid, and long term, to address these challenges. And when I look at the revised budget that we all are here to vote on, it's a budget that I can support. Among the many things that have been discussed and will be discussed around affordable housing, mental health care, too, that I really want to shine a spotlight on are, one, domestic violence. We've had way too many folks come to our office who are in the depths of despair, fleeing their abusers, do not know where they are going to take themselves, too often their children. So to be able to see a threefold increase year over year in rapid rehousing for domestic violence victims, for cash assistance, also for education for abusers, to have them stop the terrible actions that they've engaged in is something that I've heard from advocates across the city that will be a truly meaningful impact, especially when we look at things like a 3,000% increase in the number of folks who have reached out to the city and the state through the domestic violence hotline, 100% increase in domestic violence-related homicides. Those investments are going to be hugely impactful. Second is environmental protection. This council, in my first year in office, declared a state of climate emergency. Our climate was at a crossroads, more frequent and severe storms, flooding, lakefront erosion in ways that touch all of our communities. And folks are saying, what are you going to do to match the scale of the crisis that we're facing? And the nearly $200 million that are in this budget are a very strong step in the right direction. We're talking about planting more trees, other green infrastructure, removing lead paint and other hazards from homes. The list goes on, but this is a critical step at a time when we desperately need it. The last thing I'll say is, we know that earmarking these funds alone aren't going to be sufficient, that we need to have transparency and oversight in ways that this body has not seen before. That's why I'm really excited that we've created a subcommittee to be able to meet consistently with one another, with the administration, but also with the public in a transparent way to be able to ensure that week after week, month after month, we are spending these funds in the ways that were intended. So I'll close by saying that this isn't a perfect budget. It's not possible. But there are critical investments at a time when we need them most, and that's why I'll be supporting it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Sixo Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last year, Donald Trump made headlines when he told us that he did more for the black community than any president since Abraham Lincoln. A couple weeks ago, we in the Latino Caucus heard something huntingly similar when Mayor Lightfoot told us she's done more for the black community than Harold Washington. Instead of one app in the past, Mayor, please show us that you put the lives and livelihoods of our black and brown communities ahead of your downtown donors. But this budget does not do that. Just like last year, this budget relies on property tax increases, regressive taxes, and fines. If this budget passes, let me predict what the post-budget PR campaign will look like. You will hear we're making, quote-unquote, unheard of commitments for $188 million for environmental justice. But what that really means is that we settle for flushing funds without a fully functional Department of the Environment, without adequate, long-term planning, and without clarity on whether the industry will influence a possible environmental justice agenda. You will hear that we're putting forward a transformative housing budget. But what that really means is that we settle for $5 million of the $70 million commitment that we need for single-room occupancy and transitional housing. And what all that means is that in the middle of a pandemic and in extreme weather, we allow the mayor to continue to turn her back on 80,000 unhoused people and people who have unstable housing to go from shelter to shelter. Just last night, I received a call about a family with a 13-month-old baby that just took up residence in a campsite in our ward. And we will be on our own to seek to help them with the city again tying its hands in purpose. Those of us trying to help our most vulnerable residents will be without city support again. You also hear the mayor worked with progressive city council members on housing, homelessness, and mental health. But what that really means is that we settle for a petence of an extra $10 million in funding out of the $100 million that was requested, 10% of what's needed, despite there being almost $2 billion allocated for the city from the American Rescue funding. Even in times of abundance, the dogma capitalism demands suffering and austerity for the working class to benefit the billionaire donors of the mayor. You will hear that we're being smart about paying off debt. But what that really means is that we settle for prioritizing interest to Wall Street banks over the people of our city who need these programs and relief now. You will hear the mayor says her door is always open to people with solutions. But what that really means is that we settle for background compromises that shut out conversations about real solutions. We should not pass a budget that requires public relations gymnastics to justify why city council is in full investing in our communities that need it the most. We shouldn't need PR gymnastics to explain why we settle. We should pass a budget that offers more prevention than reaction. We should pass a budget that equitably taxes the rich and large corporations so that we have a sustainable and a stable city. We should pass a budget that puts full impactful funding behind investment and relief. Social workers, nurses in our schools, after-school programs, trade programs, rehab programs, and workforce development and programs that truly hire from our communities. And in the face of an unprecedented gun violence in our city, we should pass a budget that moves another $80 million from shot spatter and CPDA vacancies right now to strategic investments for violence prevention and social services for more vulnerable communities because our children and our families are dying. I will not settle for less than what is possible for the residents of Chicago. I vote no, and I do so knowing this mayor had the resources to meet the urgent needs of our residents. I held public town hall meetings across my ward, and I vote no because the residents know. And I know that Chicagoans deserve a budget written without the mayor watering their demands down to crumbs when we have $1.9 billion in federal emergency funds that could help Chicago recover. But there's another reason why I vote no, Mayor. And it's because this city cannot trust you to lead transparently and responsibly. Even the Transparency Committee in this budget, just like in 2019, doesn't have any teeth. The fact that still we haven't released the inspector general reports about Angelique Young and about the city-approved Hillco demolition is proof that you are not trustworthy. If our city can trust your integrity, how can we trust that you will responsibly and fairly spend billions of tax dollars? I vote no on this black check. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Sorry, thank you, Madam Chairman, Madam President, I'm sorry. I too rise definitely to support this budget. As you know, I'm not a person to always stand to speak on items, but I'm definitely want to speak on this budget. I want to thank you for allowing your staff to first open their doors to me with whatever I needed or questions I had. I didn't always get the answer that I wanted, but I did get answers. I want to thank you, Suzie and Jenny, for allowing me to sit at the table months ago and bring corporations in to talk about ideas how to either make money or save money for the city of Chicago. Again, thank you for allowing me to do that, and it was the first time that I've done that. Mayor, I think, you know, without a doubt, you've picked an awesome budget chairman. Chairman Dow, I want you to know that every day, all doing budget, I gain more and more respect for you, for your integrity. So again, I will be supporting this budget today. We didn't get everything we wanted, but we got a lot what we needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Curtis. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a year where our grassroots movements and communities who have been struggling on the streets for so long get some of the basics we urgently need. And I'm proud to be here to see it through. This budget delivers some wins in environmental health, violence prevention, homelessness services, housing, mental health. For the last two years, we have not stopped talking about treatment, not trauma, about how to build the structures of care we need so that we can move away from punishment and meet the needs of our people. Our public mental health clinics are a fundamental part of this effort. And for the first time in 10 years, there's meaningful investments to build those clinics. We didn't get any clinics reopened, but we got 29 permanent positions to support the work of our clinics that come from the corporate budget. I want to thank the Collaborative for Community Wellness and the over 40 organizations in it who have been working intensely for this to happen. I want to thank Afsmi to push for the city to assume the urgent responsibility of caring for our people directly. We are still giving much-needed money our communities desperately need to banks and to police. And we aim to change that in the near future. But we have been able to push in the direction of public good as opposed to the neoliberal route we have been embracing when it comes to mental health in this city. And that's something we need to be proud of. We continue to fight for treatment, not trauma, for a non-police crisis response, for mental health, for the structures of care that will keep us safe. Everything good in this budget has been fought for for years. Thank you to my colleagues who work hard to make this happen and to the members of the mayor's team who were willing to engage in dialogue with me and with the movement. We will keep fighting to get the resources our communities deserve. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. And I wanted to recognize the leaders on this from our city council. First, Finance Chair Scott Wagaspek doesn't get enough credit for his fine work in steering that committee. But certainly, Chairperson Dow, it's always a pleasure to work with you, and it's been a pleasure to work with you for a long time now, and I look forward to that continuing. To Mayor's staff, also want to recognize their good efforts and to the mayor picking up phone calls and making them where we could. Also, our caucuses continue to play a vital role in being able to deliver for our communities. You know, we've heard from a number of different groups that would like us to support this budget. The homelessness groups, domestic violence, the environmental community. Folks in the mental health space are very proud of the increases in city mental health resources. And as well, we've heard a lot from our folks in the community of single-room dwellings and the advances we've been able to make there. But the one area where I wanted to highlight that my base is very excited about is the unique investments this city will now be placing into guaranteed basic income. It's a program that will give 5,000 of our neighbors $500 a month to decide how to best support their families, particularly as we continue on through this historic and dreadful pandemic. Direct cash isn't a silver bullet, but guaranteed income can be a tool to help recover from the pandemic for a more equitable city. This is a moment to attend to the insecurity faced by so many Chicagoans. We can use this unprecedented amount of money and federal support to do something old, and that's what this program is. And I congratulate the authors of this program. And I look forward to working with all of my colleagues and figuring out how this program will be unveiled moving forward. Like the child tax credits and stimulus checks, which pulled 11 million Americans from poverty during the pandemic, I believe that this money will have immediate impacts. Research indicates from across the country that this type of cash infusion meets the basic needs such like housing, food, shelter, clothing, and educational expenses that are so desperately needed. That support is so desperately needed by our residents. I thank my colleagues and all those who have helped move this budget in a more progressive direction. And I look forward to the continued conversations. And I generally support the move forward. I broadly support the efforts here. And I look forward to the further conversations and a movement forward. Thank you, Madam President, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Miroz Rosa.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, this budget is being passed at a very moment in time when so many families are suffering. We've seen over 5,000 Chicagoans pass during this pandemic. We see young people engage in carjackings because they have no hope for their future because they don't see a better tomorrow for themselves. We have Chicagoans who are afraid to walk down the street. We have growing income inequality. We have 40% of Americans who say that their quality of life has diminished during this pandemic. And in the midst of all this suffering, we saw the federal government take a little bit of action and provide our city with $1.9 billion in federal COVID relief dollars through the American Rescue Plan. When those dollars were first announced, there were some in this chamber who felt that a vast majority of those funds should go to Wall Street. But working-class Chicagoans, Chicago's progressive movement, demanded that instead those funds be invested in our communities and the things that we need. And beginning in March of this year, they initiated a campaign through a powerful coalition of grassroots community groups and progressive activists to envision a city that spent those dollars in our neighborhoods in the programs that would lift people up. In June of this year, thanks to the participatory process that was engaged in, a group of aldermen in this chamber introduced the Chicago Rescue Plan, a plan to allocate $1.9 billion that we received in the federal government in programs like direct cash assistance and a guaranteed basic income pilot, in programs to fund mental health, in programs to fund homeless services, in programs to fund affordable housing, and so many other programs for the health and well-being and public safety of our communities. Because of that work, because of progressive Chicagoans and a progressive multiracial working-class movement, this budget includes significant investments in the things that we need today. It includes $150 million towards affordable housing, includes approximately $110 million towards homelessness services. It includes one of the largest guaranteed basic income pilot programs in the United States to provide working families and poor, struggling families who are struggling in this moment with a little bit of cash assistance, a program that was decried by some chambers, by some members of this chamber as a handout, as something that our working, poor families didn't deserve. So I'm voting yesterday on this budget to support those things that progressives won, that our communities fought for, what our communities have demanded. that our communities fought for, what our communities have demanded. And I'm so proud particularly of the movement to invest in our city's public mental health clinics, who said that we have to reverse the neoliberal trend of disinvestment, of privatization, and get city government and City Hall back into the service of direct service. Because of what they have been fighting for over the last several years, for the first time in a decade, we have seen an investment in the city's public mental health clinics. Community fought for that, community demanded that, and progressive votes are delivering that today. At the same time, I want to recognize that there's a lot in this budget that a lot of Chicagoans don't like. Over half a billion dollars in our COVID relief money will effectively be given to Chase Bank, and this budget continues to fund policing and jails more than the things that are proven to actually keep us safe. And that's why I'll be voting no on the fiscal 2021 budget amendment. This is a complicated issue, but I'm proud of the work that progressives have done to get us here, and I reflect on the words of Karen Lewis, a legendary Chicago labor leader who knew how to deal with some volatile mayors. Karen Lewis said, "We fight to get to the next plateau to then fight again." In this budget, we've got into a new plateau in funding for our city's public mental health clinics, we've got into a new plateau in direct cash assistance to struggling families, and now we do it all over again, rinse and repeat. There's so much more that we need to do to win the social and economic justice that our communities need, but I know that we do that now in this moment as a progressive movement that knows how to fight in the streets and knows how to deliver in this chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman LaSpata.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This has been a really incredible year, which as my colleagues have been talking about, the conversation of this budget maybe concluding a month sooner than usual, but it started half a year ago when the federal government passed the American Rescue Plan. And I, as Alderman Rosa was saying, was so grateful for the town halls, for the surveys that we did over that time, for the work that led to the Chicago Rescue Plan, identifying those investments that make us healthier, stabbler, more safe as communities. I am really grateful also for the leadership of our entire budget team, for Budget Director Park, for CFO Bennett, for Chairman Dowell, for the work that we did with UIC, with these community engagement forums and town halls we did across the city. As someone who has been participating in those spaces, not as an Alderman, for about 15 years, they were genuinely the most participatory, engaging spaces I've been in as a Chicagoan, and that was an incredible experience. And there is so much to appreciate in this budget because it really points the way towards the city that I was hoping to lead on when I ran for Alderman a couple of years ago. It is making us more safe as a community. The way we're investing in public safety, in violence prevention and street outreach services, in the way that we are transforming and reinvesting in our youth diversion and deflection services will lead to genuinely safer, less violent streets for all Chicagoans. It makes us more sustainable as a city. Mayor Lightfoot, when you came in, you were coming in after really a lost decade on fighting climate change in this city, and the investments that we have made year over year have dramatically turned the corner. I am excited for what we're investing in now and what we're going to work on from a policy perspective, building on our decarbonization working group coming into 2022. I am excited for the work we're doing to make this a more affordable city. As an office, we, like a lot of you, we visit the encampments in our ward, we know what our neighbors need to be safe and healthy and affordably housed, and this budget makes those investments, and I'm incredibly proud of that. I'm grateful for the investments we're making, generational investments on domestic violence for the tens of thousands of Chicagoans who today do not know what their options are towards the violence that they are facing in their homes. We are creating a pathway for safety for those women. I am very, very grateful for that work and for what we're budgeting for 2022. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about my nuanced concerns related to items in the 2021 amendment. I'm grateful for the responses I received from CFO Bennett, from the IGA team. I wish I'd received this in a more timely fashion to feel like I could move my vote in a way that felt like it was in my good conscience, so I will today be voting no on that amendment. But broadly, this budget, the process that led to it, what is on the paper we're voting for, points a way towards the Chicago that I think a lot of our communities have been dreaming of for a long time, and I'm grateful for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Chair recognizes Alderman King, who's now not here, so we will skip her. The chair recognizes Alderman Tallya Farah.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this budget, and I want to thank you and your budget team and Chairman Dow for presenting this budget to each and every one of us. Madam President, I think we've all been impacted, and not just the members of this council here, but every member in this city, every resident of the city, has been impacted by what we see as a rise in gun violence, murders, carjackings, sexual assaults, and other crimes. I support this budget because this budget brings a comprehensive approach to reducing violence in the city of Chicago. As my colleague Alderman Burnett said, it brings resources back to our communities, it brings resources back to our neighborhood to the tune of significant investments being made in community safety initiatives, youth intervention and diversion programs, victim support, reentry workforce programs, mental health and well-being of our community residents, affordable housing, just to name a few. But I think what stands out most to me in this budget, amongst other things, would be the investment in mental health wellness of our Chicago police officers and our first responders in the city of Chicago. The Department of Justice just a few years ago reported that 60%, oh well, I should say, that our police officers commit suicide in the city of Chicago at a rate of 60% higher than the national average. With this budget, this city makes significantly, significant investments toward the mental health of our officers by bringing in at least 11 additional clinicians that are needed on our police department. This would put a clinician every single police district. It's no secret that our police are privy to witnessing some of the most traumatic events in the city of Chicago, along with our firemen and firewomen, and we have to protect their mental health. Along with seeing traumatic events in the city, the stress alone of policing is enough to provide our officers' need of mental health services. And so I support this budget because it really focuses on making this city better. When we have a better police department, better police officers serving our city, we can have a better city. So I thank you for your commitment to the Chicago Police Department and its officers and reducing violence in the city of Chicago by producing a comprehensive budget that takes away the argument of we could just arrest our way out of this. We can't just arrest our way out of it. We have to make sure that the resources that are being provided, or the resources that our neighborhoods need, are being provided. So thank you, Madam President, and I encourage all of my colleagues to vote yes on this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman King, are you back? The chair recognizes Alderman King.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Didn't know that I was called. I do want to thank you, Mayor, for your leadership here, along with your team, Director Parks, Controller Soni, Chief Bennett, also Chairman Dow, as a number of people have said, I appreciate your leadership here as well. I think most importantly, I'd like to highlight the Progressive Caucus and the work that they have done because the 2022 Chicago budget is a progressive win, and it's a win for our most vulnerable. I'd also like to highlight the work that we did with the Black Caucus as well as the Latino Caucus. We have to continue to prioritize together, we just must, if we're going to continue to get wins like this. The weight of COVID-19 and social unrest has shined a light on the vast structural inequities in our city, in our county, in our country. This awakening has highlighted now more than ever that we must do more for our marginalized, especially in our Black and Brown communities. We have lost almost 6,000 Chicagoans to COVID-19. The traffic toll, excuse me, the tragic toll of this pandemic coupled with a racial reckoning and social unrest has been felt across our city and has shaken us to our core. Yet it has informed us on where our budget priorities need to be for not just 2022, but for years to come. Intentionally combating structural inequities must inform everything we do if we are to survive as a world-class city. I am proud of the way our caucus members and other members of the city council have successfully fought to save our most vulnerable communities represented in this budget. Going into the budget season, the caucus prioritized transparency, accountability around how we spend billions of dollars, violence prevention, housing, mental health, targeted financial assistance, social infrastructure improvements, childcare, our environment, equity positions, and quality of life resources, particularly in streets and sands. And while we need to prioritize more progressive structural revenue and direct these resources equitatively, especially around racial redress, this is indeed a progressive budget and a good start. So thank you to all involved. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Alderman King. The chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot. I want to echo some of the comments of Alderwoman King, but I want to start by saying thank you to your team, Budget Director Susie Park, CFO Jenny Bennett, and their entire team for crafting this budget proposal and listening to the priorities of the members of this council and Chicagoans throughout the process. I want to commend our colleague Chairman Pat Dow on her leadership through this budget process. As we've heard from the debate today, there are many points of view on the budget, and she was pulled in many directions, but her team did an outstanding job of working with the members of the council, getting their feedback, and working toward one of, I think, one of the most important and potentially transformational budgets this council will have voted on in decades. On February 20th, 2020, I, along with some members of this body and hundreds of leaders from around the city, attended a poverty summit held by the mayor. At this powerful meeting, presenters laid out in stark terms the poverty that faces tens of thousands of Chicago residents, and the poverty and the systematic injustices that have led to that specifically impacting Black and Latino Chicagoans. It also laid out in stark terms the painful history of how we got there. Less than a month later, our city and our country were shut down because of COVID-19. As the harmful impacts of the virus took hold in our city, our Black and Latino communities saw more illness, more death, and more hardship than the rest of our city. And those living in poverty in Chicago now faced housing insecurity, threat of eviction, job loss, all compounded by a public health crisis. I think back to the deep challenges outlined at the poverty summit, and now individuals and communities living on the margins would be lacking crucial support needed to weather that storm. A few months later, our city and communities faced more trauma with the murder of George Floyd and the unrest that followed. That unrest caused many communities to lose businesses, and some of those communities have not seen those businesses and jobs return. But through it all, essential workers continue to show up on the front lines, putting their health and livelihood at risk. Through it all, people hung together and kept faith for a better day and hope for a better city. Over the past year and a half, it's been a reflection point for many of us, myself included, which we cannot shy away from. The budget comes at a critical time for Chicago. After two years of a global pandemic, increased violence, divisions, reckoning of racial and economic injustice throughout our city and country, it comes at a time of long-needed reflection on racial inequities that have defined Chicago and our communities and how we live and thrive. I stand today in strong support of the budget before us because it invests significant funding to communities most deeply impacted by COVID-19. It looks to uplift residents and communities that have experienced decade-long disinvestment. COVID-19 showed us the importance of home, the safety and sanctuary needed for every resident and every family. This budget makes historic investments in housing and sets a standard for the way that which we should invest in stable, affordable housing in our city moving forward. Working together with the council and the Department of Housing, over the last 20 months, we have provided $100 million in rental assistance funding to support renters impacted by loss of income and work. We have another $100 million on the way to support these renters. This budget before us adds an additional $240 million to affordable housing resources, including 75 million to create mixed-income, mixed-use family housing, 18 million for homeowner grants and repairs, 12 million to acquire and rehab abandoned buildings, $87 million to clean up and activate the vacant lots around our city, and $47 million to get the lead out of homes that poison children of our Chicago. On top of these investments in housing in the budget, there's the additional affordable units that will be created by the work we've done to create a new ARO and ADU ordinance. These investments mean a senior citizen living in Chatham can stay in their home making repairs they need to fix up their home, a longtime renter, a working-class member who could become a homeowner in North Lawndale, and family needing affordable housing can have more choice throughout our city. Homelessness prevention and support services received 117 million to assist Chicagoans living in homelessness and facing the cold winter in front of us. This critical funding includes additional outreach workers, expanded mobile outreach, rapid rehousing, funding for shelter and infrastructure operations. The pandemic showed us all the cracks in our shelter system. Now is the moment to fix those cracks and provide a shelter system that can support transitioning Chicagoans who are living in homelessness into supportive housing. The budget also puts $65 million to build more supportive housing units and supports the funding to shore up the single-room occupancy buildings within our city, which is work that I am deeply committed to. Mental health is a critical part of the public health, and this pandemic has taken an economic, physical, and mental health toll on our city. The plan before us has significant funding to address mental health needs of all Chicago. The budget expands trauma and foreign services to all 77 neighborhoods, adds positions to our clinics, and works to guarantee that every single Chicagoan in every community has access to mental health services through CDPH's Mental Health Equity Plan. There's $150 million for youth programs in this budget for mentoring, for job and career incentives, and out-of-school programs. This funding will help inspire and help our youth of our city to have a more healthy and productive future. All of these areas I mentioned have a historic opportunity to help our residents and lift up and reinvest our communities, and doing so while moving our city more forward in an equitable way. But the number one issue facing our city is violence. If we cannot gain control of the violence on our streets, it will undercut everything we are trying to do. What violence has taken from Chicago families is a pandemic. We need to address it with a plan, with reimagined support services, and unity as Chicago lives. with reimagined support services and unity as Chicago leaders. To address violence, we need to work closer together as we did when we came together to pass the ECPS ordinance earlier this year. To address violence, we need to fill the police vacancies and properly train our next generation of officers. To address violence, we need to deploy those officers where they need to be. That's in our districts, where block by block, they can build trust desperately needed to improve safety of our neighborhoods. To address violence, we need to use $150 million in violence prevention money that goes to organizations and outreach workers who do the powerful work of stopping the back-and-forth retaliatory shootings that robs families of their loved ones and holds communities hostage. And to address violence, we need a cohesive plan that all, we need a cohesive plan for public safety that every Chicagoan understands and every stakeholder can rally behind. It's been a hard two years, and it'll be a hard winter. And we have big challenges before us. This budget enables us to do significant transformational work that will lift up our communities and set a course for more equitable Chicago. Our true challenge is not to vote today. It's the hard work tomorrow and throughout next year to implement this budget and to have these positive impacts reach Chicagoans in every neighborhood. For that important task to be achieved, we have to work together like we have not worked before. The administration, departments, and this council working in a unified front to lift up our city and Chicagoans that need it most and are in harm's way, putting differences aside and working together. That's what our residents expect. That's what our residents deserve. If we can do that, we'll move our city forward together and set a course for a better, more transformed Chicago. I encourage all of my colleagues to support this budget, and I look forward to the important work in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, truly, it's a historic budget by all proportions. You were trusted by the people of Chicago in 2019 to deliver for them, and you're doing just that. Two years running into a pandemic has been the toughest time in Chicago's history. If you really think about it, notably the Chicago Fire of 1871, the Haymarket Riots of 1877, the 1919 Race Riots, and now we have the 2020 unrest to present in our crime epidemic. Leadership starts at the top, obviously. This budget is nothing more than equity and social justice. For many years and many decades, this city has invested in the waterfront, has invested downtown, has invested in stadiums throughout Soldier's Field, Windtrust Arena, Millennium Park, you name it. The city has invested in infrastructure, but not its people. You, Madam President, set a course different because it's a different time. And our people are living in a different era. Social unrest, inequity like never before. People don't want to give you props. I get it. You are not transactional. Okay. But you don't have to be to get things done. I've been here almost 20 years as an Alderman, and every day I get up in the morning and ask myself, what have I, I've done for my community? And what responsibility I'm going to take to make it better? What kinds of infrastructure it needs? And it's education in the schools, in the parks, in the streets, in the lighting, in the garbage, in the daily problems that are beside every community in this city? The daily grind of leadership. Because that's what people expect. I'm not blaming you. Madam President, I'm not blaming you for problems in my community. It's up to me to work with you to make it better. We should all be proud of this budget. It puts us on a fiscally sustainable track while also delivering supporting services to the people in the communities most affected by the pandemic. A lot of you have spoken already on that, but I'm going to repeat, as one of my colleagues said, rinse and repeat. This budget will revitalize commercial corridors and provide the support small businesses, non-for-profits, bars, restaurants so desperately need. To highlight, it includes 80 million violence prevention programs and support for victims of crime. Over $100 million to strengthen mental health care. We talked about it already. Ad nauseum. Your critics said we couldn't have done better. But I'm going to highlight what this budget brings. $157 million in affordable housing. $157 million in assistance to families. $108 million to prioritize health and wellness. $85 million for violence prevention. Environmental justice, $87 million, and I'm going to talk a little more about that. Arts and culture, $16 million. Climate investments, $101 million. Community development, $166 million. Parks and Recreation, $61 million. And workforce support, $87 million for the $1.2 billion. Think about that. That's twice the cost of Millennium Park. This is human capital investments that no one has done to this point, to this level, this direct to the communities that we serve. No one has done that, folks. I've been reading on it. Look at the history of Chicago. Show me where it says someone else has delivered $1.2 billion to people. Haters will hate. But the bottom line is results matter. Getting things done matter. Working together matters in this council, just like you and I do it every single day when we talk about issues that we agree on. But we should put aside the insults and the acrimony. People talking about working together and getting along, let's not talk about it. Why don't we do it? Why don't we sit down and say, stop the acrimony? Because at the end of the day, services are being provided in your communities as well. No one's being left behind in this budget. Either, I would say, even if you vote no on this budget, you're still going to get all the perks and benefits. Madam President, that's how that is. That's how you roll. I know that. My colleague, Alderman Martin, touched on this that I'm going to also repeat and rinse and repeat. Because I chair the Committee on Environmental Protection, and I'd be remiss if I don't mention those investments that people don't talk about. These investments will help reach us renewable energy goals, retrofit low-income homes, and launch an industrial community of solar pilot and five solar-powered libraries. $75 million for justice projects, environmental justice projects, $133 million will be allocated to AIS for obtaining the best energy contract for ratepayers, obviously with clean renewable energy. In the fight for clean air, CDPH and EPD will hire additional inspectors to increase monitoring and enforcement of our rental violations. $15 million will establish a new community development fund to tackle pollution and stimulate Chicago's green economy. $60 million will go towards climate-related infrastructure. This budget is the strongest for the environment I ever seen and been part of in 20 years. We're doing right by our green economy and decarbonization, which is what everybody in the environmental community seeks and looks forward to working with you on. This is all in a package here for everybody to vote on this budget. Everybody got something. We are moving together as a city. Lastly, drive around this city. Take time to visit other neighborhoods and see the change. This city is constantly changing, evolving, moving forward. The citizens expect that from us. Let's work together on that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Raboyas.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll try not to repeat some of what's been mentioned prior. But ladies and gentlemen, we as City Council have a fiduciary responsibility to pass this budget. And we will today. The fact is, as this budget will be addressing the need a gap of 2021, I think the Budget Office for that. And for that, I commend you. This budget addresses pension obligation. We need this. Without our pensions, we don't go forward, ladies and gentlemen. That's all we have. This budget addresses that, and for that, I commend you. This budget also addresses homelessness. Maybe not all of it, but it's going to catch the very few people that we need to help. And for that, I commend you. This pension, this budget addresses the families that are in need of the additional dollars every month. And for that, I commend you. This budget addresses affordable housing, as my colleague from the 48th Ward addressed earlier. Without affordable housing, we will not move forward, ladies and gentlemen. I don't care what side of the city you live on. We need to pass this budget. More importantly, I want to address Chairman Dow for the way you carried yourself and your staff. Very professional, and I thank you for that because you made it easier for us. The other team that's there, Madam President, Bennett, Parks, and Sony, we couldn't do this without you. Couldn't do this without you. As I said in one of the hearings in the City of Chicago, you kind of brought me back to the first grade to understand what we need to do to address the folks in our community, and we did that, and I appreciate that. But ladies and gentlemen, let's vote on this today. Let's move forward. For that, I thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Last speaker before we turn it back to Chairman Dow, sorry, next to the last speaker before we turn it back to Chairman Dow. Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin. Ben of these wags.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the council. First off, I too want to echo and thank Chairman Dow, our three Musketeers to my left keep us fiscally sound. And also, I really want to thank the freshmen of this council. Sometimes we can not necessarily see everything from all vantage points. And I really want to thank our younger members for bringing balance to a lot of the conversations. When I see these young leaders, when I look at Matt Martin and Maria Hatten, when I look at these young folks and know that they're going to be us who have been here a little longer, probably not as long as my friend in front of me, but we're going to be here, and these folks are going to be here to lead us through. And it's through listening and understanding is how we get balance and how this situation, I believe, has achieved balance. Tell you a quick, quick story. Growing up in the house, probably three or four nights a week, my mother made baked chicken. I hate baked chicken. She don't know that. She might know it now. But I hate baked chicken. But some days, I would go to my grandmother's house, and Grandma had fried chicken, smudged chicken, baked chicken, boiled chicken, whatever type of chicken the way that she wanted to go with dressing. And this was on a Tuesday, not Sunday. So I say that to say that in this conversation, there's a lot of choice here. There are a lot of options here. There are a lot of things that you can work with here. We talked about affordable housing. There are dollars here for affordable housing. We talk about mental health. There are dollars here for mental health. We talk about public safety. There are dollars here on public safety violence prevention. There are dollars here on violence prevention. There are dollars here in this budget for damn near everything that everybody has talked about. Now, is it perfect? No, because we might run out of fried chicken. There may be some baked chicken left when we get ready to go. But again, there are options, and there's something that everyone has talked about that is brought to the table that is part of this conversation and part of the solution. And again, I do believe that there is balance here in this conversation. Thankfully, we did receive a billion nine from the federal government, and not every dollar we were able to put toward a program. We must recall that last year, we spent money that we didn't have. And this year, we have to pay those dollars back unless we intend to straddle our children and grandchildren with that debt going forward. So this budget, I believe, does what is fiscally responsible while at the same time bringing the programmatic needs of our communities to the table. Again, some of the programming in these are investments. And for those accountants in the room, a debit could be an investment or an expense. This budget makes lots of investments. And if we do not invest in our communities, they will become an expense in many cases that we are seeing. So again, I think that we are doing what is fiscally responsible, what is programmatically achievable. And let's not forget here, this is a plan. The ARP funding has a three-year window that we will work with. Not every dollar that's been committed today will be spent in the next 12 months. There are some things that we have to develop. And again, going back to our freshmen, I want to thank Alderman Martin for his work in crafting such a committee that will look at these things and work through this. Because again, we as a council have to work with the executive branch in order to make these programs into reality, because not everything has been defined today. And I think there's one thing that we do not remember. It's not all defined. So there's going to be some additional conversations because we do have to define more of what's going to happen in this budget, especially around some of the programs that we talked about. Because a lot of this stuff has not been fully baked. But again, it's the commitment to the resources. And we have to make commitments today to help those that are in need. We've seen in the years where we have not helped communities. I believe that this budget makes a significant down payment and continues to fund and work with the needs of our communities. Now, I don't agree with everything in the budget, and people know where I stand on certain issues. But we cannot allow one piece or even two pieces to stop moving the balance of the program forward. to stop moving the balance of the program forward. So again, I would encourage us all to think through this. I know it's not perfect. I know it's not everything that we wanted. I know it's not everything that we dreamed of or imagined with this 1.9 billion dollars. But what it does do is create a sense of responsible progress for all communities in this city. And that is where we have to think and be the best we can as a council and help everyone get through this challenge that we have faced. And so again, and I'm gonna close with this. I started out in the Young Democrats and the gentleman from the Eighth Ward, former Representative Marlo Colvin, said the object of this is not to walk in the room with a bunch of guns and shoot everybody. The object of this is to figure out how we all can move forward together. And I believe that through all of the work that has been done, all of the conversations that have been had, even through the process of amendments and even the introduction itself, brought forth things that we all can work together on and move forward. With that, I thank you all, and I hope that everyone can find their way. There's something in this that you can support. It may not be everything that you wanted, but it is something that we can support. So again, just want to thank everybody for their participation. And on our close, I want to thank our chairman. She has done a great job, listening to all of us crying, complaining, moaning, and has taken that information and that energy and brought back something that we can really live with, go work in our communities and deliver for our people. So thank you, Madam Chairman, for the work that you've done to bring this to fruition. And I want to thank our mayor for listening to us in this process. Because again, today is the plan. We got to execute the plan, and we have to work with the mayor and her team to execute this plan that's been put down for us today. And I'm asking everyone to support this with an eye vote. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Chairman Regus.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any Grandma's Chicken stories in my comments. And it's really, it really is a hard act to follow, Alderman Irvin. All it did was make me hungry for what sounds like great food. But I think, you know, and it's interesting that you brought that up because one of the things I look back on over the years with our meetings during the budget was the food in the back. And the food in the back was a way to learn from other wards about what the great food was and to have the conversations at the table to collaborate throughout the day and to collaborate on questions and answers that we wanted. So I appreciate the food comments because I think they have good meaning anyway for what we do as a council. So this 2022 budget, as presented by Mayor Lightfoot, is a progressive budget. I am very proud to support today. It's a budget that is a result of collaborative efforts of all of the Aldermen here in the administration. And it's the type of budget we've been fighting for for many years. And I think it came about in large part because of the individual Aldermen and the efforts of the caucuses, the Black, Latino, and progressive caucuses. And I want to recognize them for all the work that they did as we move forward to this point. And we all know the last two years have been extremely difficult for everyone in our city and in our country. Residents have worked hard keeping their businesses afloat, parents keeping their kids in school, and citizens taking every possible opportunity to be safe, get vaccinated, and get our economy up and running again. And we have used a myriad of the city, state, and federal funds to keep them getting this job done. Well, throughout this budget process, we've seen a lot of improvements in terms of that collaboration and openness in both the budget and finance committees. All of you had a lot of great questions that we tried to get answered, that we made sure that everyone had a voice once, twice, even three times. And with Chairman Dowell's Budget Committee, the council has received answers to questions as quickly as department heads could turn them around. And the only concern I had was that when Chairwoman Dowell said she starts at nine, she means nine. Hopefully, next year, we can get back to that point. But these last two years with the pandemic did not deter us from pushing for a strong recovery. We made painful decisions this year to stabilize city debt, but these are the fiscally correct decisions. This budget is sound, and it's a solvent plan for the future of our city, in addition to being the most progressive I've seen in my time in office. We have funds available for affordable housing, direct cash investment, homeless prevention, domestic violence, and countless other social services that we haven't seen before. This budget also provides for neighborhood investments where they've been needed for decades in disenfranchised and ignored communities now and into the future. And it provides all this while riding the financial ship. Just look at the news that we saw yesterday. Amidst all this clamor, we reached a stable outlook across all bond rating agencies with a nod from Fitch. In July, Moody's had already bumped us up. The geo-debt from a negative to stable outlook based on sound fiscal policies of this administration. In Bond Buyer yesterday, it was quoted, "Outlook revision to stable reflects the ongoing revenue recovery across the city and the significant infusion of federal fiscal aid that eases pressures on the city's investment-grade standing." While Chicago still faces considerable financial challenges, the last two years have shown a difference in our approach, and thus, the ratings change. So how did we earn this positive fiscal quote? And how do we keep improving? We keep improving with continued collaboration and the sound fiscal management of this team. We're climbing the billion-dollar pension ramp. We're now on an actuarially-based calculated schedule. And as the Progressive Caucus has called for many years, we have done away with the old scoop-and-toss methods. The city is now beginning to pay down its debt rather than restructuring it, creating capacity to issue new money bonds for the transformative capital investments that we want to see as Aldermen in our communities. But we have to remain committed to the structural balance over the next two years, despite the pandemic throwing a wrench into our finances. The property tax levy does include a very modest increase. But instead of the hand-wrenching, years of hiding the need for higher taxes until it became unbearable and sticking property owners with staggering increases, this modest property tax increase provides stability and predictability while funding the critical city services that we need. That said, we also have to fight harder to support revenue streams like a graduated state income tax to ease the burden on our property owners. Good social policy is also good economic policy. And my colleagues in the Lightfoot administration today have made a collaborative attack on the root causes of crime and social dislocation. I think these investments in this budget and the efforts provided will create significant financial benefits for all Chicagoans and improve the quality of life across every ward. Finally, as part of this budget, Mayor, I'd like to say a very heartfelt thanks to all the women who led us through this challenge. Budget Chairman Pat Dowell, Budget Director Susie Park, Chief Financial Officer Jenny Wayne Bennett, and Comptroller Reshma Soni. I think their combined experience navigating this pandemic economy has been a boon for Chicago now and well into the future. So I want to thank each one of you for all the work that you undertook over the last couple of years. Mayor Lightfoot and colleagues, I also want to thank the small but knowledgeable and talented committee staff in Budget and Finance and the IGA for their part in providing the answers and all of the late-night work to get this budget done. Without such staff and without the greater staff that is our workforce across the city, we could not get this job done year in and year out. So with that, Madam President, I reiterate my strong support for this 2022 budget, and I look forward to its passage today. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman Dowell, the floor is back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor Lightfoot, I first want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on the 2022, 2022 City of Chicago budget. But before I start, I want to take the time to thank some of the many people who worked so hard to make this budget a reality. This budget is truly a collaboration among Aldermen, your administration, and the many departments that make our city run. Everyone had a hand in how we should move this city forward, and that is reflected in this budget. The entire process is led by your amazing Budget Director Susie Park. Thank you, Director Park, for your tireless work and patience with us throughout this long process. I really don't know how you do it. Of course, she is just one of the all-star, all-female financial team along with CFO Jenny Bennett and Comptroller Reshma Soni. I want to thank Carrie Anne Corrales, Kurt Peterson, Sheena Kirkendall, Beth Beatty, and all the Budget and Finance staff that I don't have the pleasure of interacting with as much as I would like. I want to give them a big thank you. Your work reflects the values that our city is built on. Gerald, Manny, Rachel, Lucia, Amanda, and the entire IGA team, what you have done to move us through this process cannot be understated. Your responsiveness and problem-solving is greatly appreciated. Jeff Levine, you get your own special thank you. I think everyone here knows why and would agree with me. To all the department heads and their senior staff who came before the committee during budget hearings, thank you. I think this year was one of the most successful and best departmental hearing processes I can think of. I want to thank the members of the Budget Committee, my staff, Renee and Brian, for their early morning and late nights and total support of my efforts here. Now, I would be remiss without thanking all of my colleagues for their participation, insight, and strength through this long, 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 long process. This was a budget unlike any other. And despite all the challenges through the spirit of collaboration, we are at the doorstep of passing something monumental, a progressive budget that is balanced and sound. And last, but definitely not least, Mayor Lightfoot, I have known you for many, many years. And I don't think in our wildest dreams we could have foreseen accomplishing so much for the city under such dire circumstances. But I could not think of a better leader, a better partner to work with to address our city challenges. Okay, now for the budget. This all started many months ago with neighborhood town hall meetings and public outreach, gathering ideas from all corners of the city. For those efforts, many of us, but not all of us, Alderman Lopez, sat together for many hours, over many sessions, over many weeks and months to discuss how to address our city's budgetary needs. We put ideas forward, we workshopped, we discussed, we narrowed, and we focused. The administration negotiated this budget in good faith. I personally took people at their word when fighting for projects important to various Aldermen. And this budget is a Herculean effort by everyone involved to meet the individual needs of all fifty Aldermen, representing the diverse 70/70 communities that make up our city. This is the culmination of our efforts, of these efforts. And the ideas put forward are reflected in the budget. Let me repeat. The ideas put forward by the public and the individual asked from this City Council members are in the budget as promised. Let me remind you why we should be proud of this budget and why you should vote for this budget. There's 135 million for violence prevention efforts, 150 million for youth programming, 12 million to provide behavioral health services to support stable housing for high utilizers of emergency services, 144 million dollars in assistance to families, which includes 71 million in targeted financial and legal assistance for underserved residents. There's 103 million for health and wellness, 202 million for homeless support services, 166 million for community development, 87 million in small businesses and workforce support, 26 million for arts and culture. This budget funds the expansion of the co-responder model to deliver a non-police response to our city's public safety concerns. It retires nearly a billion dollars of debt to put Chicago on a stable financial path. It puts the city's pension systems on an actuarially-defined payment plan. It more than doubles the size of our tree trimming operations. It funds capital construction projects for all of our wards. It helps us fully catch up on the delivery of garbage carts. It adds critical night and weekend hours for mental health services and more clinical staff to address these needs. It adds staff to help speed up land sales in our wards. It will support the development of affordable and market-rate housing, and it includes SRO preservation. It allows all of us to invest in social services in our ward. And it will ensure proper oversight of this spending by creating a new ARP spending oversight committee. Thank you, Alderman Martin. As a subcommittee of the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, and I look forward to working with you on this effort. It ain't going to be easy. Let us consider where we were a year ago, facing historic budget gaps in the middle of a monumental drop in city revenue. And that doesn't even take into account the terrible human cost of the pandemic on our city. CPS was closed, businesses were closed, a vaccine was months away. Everyone was suffering, no matter what neighborhood you lived in. Fast forward to today. Today, we have the opportunity to not only bridge the gap to a brighter future, we have an opportunity today to make historic investments in our city, to make Chicago what we all want it to be, a city that houses its homeless, a city that helps the undeserved, a city that invests in our neighborhoods, our people, our businesses, a city that pays down our debt, a city that prioritizes art, a city that provides for public safety in multiple forms, a city that advances the way we provide essential services, a city that promotes the best parts of Chicago while prioritizing fixing past inequities. This budget gets us one step closer to that reality, so please join me. Please join me. Alderman Irvin, let's not be chickens. Please join me in this journey and join me in supporting this budget. Just like we came together to collaborate on this budget, let's move our city forward together. Madam Mayor, I thank you for your leadership, and I thank you for this time. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. And ladies and gentlemen, I
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ ...[1735.13]
Hairston is a yes. Alderman Sawyer. Sawyer is a yes. Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris. Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal. Beal is a no. Alderman Zloski Garza. Zloski Garza is a yes. Alderman Thompson. Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardness. Cardness is a yes. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke. Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez. Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman. Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore. Moore is a no. Alderman Curtis. Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor. Taylor is a no. Alderman Brookins. Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez, they know. Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes. Alderman Tito Lopez. Tito Lopez is a no. Alderman Maldonado. Maldonado is a no. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes. Alderman Urban. Urban is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Raboyas. Raboyas is a yes. Alderman Cardona. Cardona is a yes. Alderman Waguspack. Waguspack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Austin. Austin is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alderman Vegas. Vegas is a yes. Alderman Metz. Metz is a yes. Alderman Spisato. Spisato is a yes. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Apolitano. Apolitano is a no. Alderman Riley. Riley is a no. Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunny. Tunny is a yes. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a no. Alderman Kapelman. Kapelman is a yes. Alderman Martin. Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a yes.
The yeas are 37, the nays are 13. The matter passes. Chairman Dow.
Concur in the recommendation of
I'm sorry, hold on one second. Alderman Thompson on a motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor of reconsideration of the last vote signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I now move to concur in the recommendation of the Committee and adopt the 2022 Salary Resolution, which was ordered to be deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of October 25, 2021, as R2021-1126 by the same roll call vote as was applied to the 2022 Code Corrections Ordinance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
No objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. I now move to concur in the recommendation of the Committee and adopt the 2022 Substitute Management Ordinance, which was ordered to be deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of October 25, 2021, as SO2021-4785 by the same roll call vote as was applied to the 2022 Code Corrections Ordinance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lasbada. Lasbada is a yes. Alderman Hopkins. Hopkins is a yes. Alderman Dow. Dow is a yes. Alderman King. King is a yes. Alderman Hairston. Hairston is a yes. Alderman Sawyer. Sawyer is a yes. Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris. Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal. Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Zloski Garza. Zloski Garza is a yes. Alderman Thompson. Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardness. Cardness is a yes. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke. Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez. Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman. Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore. Moore is a no. Alderman Curtis. Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Taylor. Taylor is a yes. Alderman Brookins. Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes. Alderman Tito Lopez. Tito Lopez is a no. Alderman Maldonado. Maldonado is a no. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes. Alderman Urban. Urban is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Raboyas. Raboyas is a yes. Alderman Cardona. Cardona is a yes. Alderman Waguspack. Waguspack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Austin. Austin is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alderman Vegas. Vegas is a yes. Alderman Metz. Metz is a yes. Alderman Spisato. Spisato is a no. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Apolitano. Apolitano is a no. Alderman Riley. Riley is a no. Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunny. Tunny is a yes. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a no. Alderman Kapelman. Kapelman is a yes. Alderman Martin. Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a yes.
The yeas are 38, the nays are 12. The matter passes. Alderman Thompson on a motion for reconsideration.
I move that we reconsider that last
All those in favor of a motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay.
No.
The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Dow, back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. I now move to concur in the recommendations of the Committee and adopt both the 2022 Motive Fuel Tax Allocation Ordinance and the associated ordinance for an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Transit Authority and Cook County. Both items were ordered to be deferred and published and appear in the Journal of Proceedings of October 25, 2021, as 02021-4557 and 02021-45-4758. I move to pass both items by the same roll call vote as was applied to the 2022 Code Corrections Ordinance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
No objections, so ordered.
Item number five, I move to concur in the recommendation of the Committee and adopt the amendments to the 2021 Annual Appropriation Ordinance, which was ordered to be deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of October 25, 2021, as 02021-4240 by the same roll call vote as was applied to the 2022 Code Corrections Ordinance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderman Rosanna, Rodriguez Sanchez, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Taylor, and Alderman Vasquez voting no.
The chair recognizes, hold on. The chair recognizes Alderman Tito Lopez.
Well, Chairman, I would like to be recognized as a no as well.
One second, please. The chair recognizes Alderman Haddon.
Court, it doesn't know as well. Thank you.
We now have a request for a roll call. Please call the roll.
Alderman Lasbada. Sorry. No, okay. Alderman Lasbada is a no. Alderman Hopkins. Hopkins is a yes. Alderman Dow. Dow is a yes. Alderman King. King is a yes. Alderman Hairston. Hairston is a yes. Alderman Sawyer. Sawyer is a yes. Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris. Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal. Beal is a no. Alderman Zloski Garza. Zloski Garza is a yes. Alderman Thompson. Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardness. Cardness is a yes. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke. Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez. Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman. Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore. Moore is a no. Alderman Curtis. Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Taylor. Taylor is a no. Alderman Brookins. Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a no. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott is a yes. Alderman Tito Lopez. Tito Lopez is a no. Alderman Maldonado. Maldonado is a no. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes. Alderman Urban. Urban is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Raboyas. Raboyas is a yes. Alderman Cardona. Cardona is a yes. Alderman Waguspack. Waguspack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a no. Alderman Austin. Austin is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a no. Alderman Vegas. Vegas is a no. Alderman Metz. Metz is a yes. Alderman Spisato. Spisato is a yes. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez, they know. Alderman Apolitano. Apolitano is a no. Alderman Riley. Riley is a no. Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunny. Tunny is a yes. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a no. Alderman Kapelman. Kapelman is a yes. Alderman Martin. Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a no. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a yes.
The yeas are 31, the nays are 19. The motion passes. Alderman Thompson on a motion for reconsideration.
I move that we reconsider that vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The motion for reconsideration fails. The matter passes. Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I now move to concur in the recommendation of the Committee and adopt both a series of corrections and revisions to the 2022 Annual Appropriation Ordinance and the 2022 Annual Appropriation Ordinance as amended. Both items were ordered to be deferred and published and appear in the Journal of Proceedings of October 25, 2021. I move passage of these items by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lasbada. Lasbada is a yes. Alderman Hopkins. Hopkins is a no. Alderman Dow. Dow is a yes. Alderman King. King is a yes. Alderman Hairston. Hairston is a yes. Alderman Sawyer. Sawyer is a yes. Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris. Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal. Beal is a no. Alderman Zloski Garza. Zloski Garza is a yes. Alderman Thompson. Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardness. Cardness is a yes. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke. Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez. Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman. Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore. Moore is a no. Alderman Curtis. Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor. Taylor is a no. Alderman Brookins. Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes. Alderman Tito Lopez. Tito Lopez is a no. Alderman Maldonado. Maldonado is a no. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes. Alderman Urban. Urban is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Raboyas. Raboyas is a yes. Alderman Cardona. Cardona is a yes. Alderman Waguspack. Waguspack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Austin. Austin is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alderman Vegas. Vegas is a yes. Alderman Metz. Metz is a yes. Alderman Spisato. Spisato is a no. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Apolitano. Apolitano is a no. Alderman Riley. Riley is a no. Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunny. Tunny is a yes. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a no. Alderman Kapelman. Kapelman is a yes. Alderman Martin. Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a yes.
The yeas are 35, the nays are 15. The matter passes. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we reconsider that vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Dow.
Yes, Madam President, that concludes the unfinished business related to the Budget Committee.
Chairman Waguspack, I believe the floor is yours.
Madam President, speaking for finance-related items, I move to concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee and adopt the General Obligation Bonds and Additional Sales Tax Bonds Ordinance, which was ordered to be deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of October 25, 2021, as O2021-4788. I move passage by roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lasbada. Lasbada is a yes. Alderman Hopkins. Hopkins is a yes. Alderman Dow. Dow is a yes. Alderman King. King is a yes. Alderman Hairston. Hairston is a yes. A rule 14? Oh, rule 14, okay.
Finance Committee, Alderman Sawyer and I believe Alderman Thompson both asked for a rule 14 on this item. It should be reflected in the record, but I believe they will still have to state it here.
You'll have to state your rationale, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. In this particular matter, I abstained for the reasons that a relative of mine is, I've confirmed is on one or more of the deal teams and out of abundance of caution, I've invoked rule fourteen and I've submitted a letter to that effect to the Finance Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Continue with the roll. When we get to Thompson, he can do this thing.
Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes, Alderman Harris. Harris is a yes, Alderman Beal. Beal is a no, Alderman Zloski Garza. Zloski Garza is a yes.
Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. I too abstained through rule fourteen due to a relative who was part of the law firm that was selected as part of the team. And then I subsequently learned that the firm which I'm of counsel, a lawyer at that firm had done work for one of the investment banks at a deal outside of the city of Chicago, so, two reasons. Thank you.
Understood. Please continue.
Alderman Cardness. Cardness is a yes, Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a yes, Alderman Burke. Burke is a no, Alderman Lopez. Lopez is a no, Alderman Coleman. Coleman is a yes, Alderman Moore. Moore is a no, Alderman Curtis. Curtis is a yes, Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a yes, Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor is a no, Alderman Brookins. Brookins is a yes, Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a yes, Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is a yes, Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott is a yes, Alderman Tito Lopez. Tito Lopez is a no, Alderman Malanato. Malanato is a no, Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes, Alderman Irvin. Irvin is a yes, Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a yes, Alderman Reboyas. Reboyas is a yes, Alderman Cardona. Cardona is a yes, Alderman Waguspack. Waguspack is a yes, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes, Alderman Austin. Austin is a yes, Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a yes, Alderman Vegas. Vegas is a yes, Alderman Mitz. Mitz is a yes, Alderman Spisato. Spisato is a yes, Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a yes, Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is a yes, Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is a no, Alderman Riley. Riley is an I, or Riley is a yes, Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes, Alderman Tony. Tony is a yes, Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a yes, Alderman Capelman. Capelman is a yes, Alderman Martin. Martin is a yes, Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes, Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a yes, Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a yes.
The ayes are forty, the nays are eight, the matter passes. Alderman Mitchell on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I motion for reconsideration of the last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The nays have it, the motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Waguspack.
Thank you, Madam President. I now move to concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee and adopt the 2022 Revenue Ordinance, which was ordered to be deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of October twenty-fifth, 2021, as oh two zero two one dash four seven eight six, by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk.
Alderman Lasbada. Lasbada is a yes, Alderman Hopkins. Hopkins is a yes, Alderman Dow. Dow is a yes, Alderman King. King is a yes, Alderman Hairston. Hairston is a yes, Alderman Sawyer. Sawyer is a yes, Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes, Alderman Harris. Harris is a yes, Alderman Beal. Beal is a no, Alderman Zloski Garza. Zloski Garza is a yes, Alderman Thompson. Thompson is a yes, Alderman Cardness. Cardness is a yes, Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a no, Alderman Burke. Burke is a no, Alderman Lopez. Lopez is a no, Alderman Coleman. Coleman is a yes, Alderman Moore. Moore is a no, Alderman Curtis. Curtis is a yes, Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a no, Alderman Taylor. Taylor is a no, Alderman Brookins. Brookins is a yes, Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a yes, Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is a no, Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes, Alderman Tito Lopez. Tito Lopez is a no, Alderman Malanato. Malanato is a no, Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes, Alderman Irvin. Irvin is a yes, Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a yes, Alderman Reboyas. Reboyas is a yes, Alderman Cardona. Cardona is a yes, Alderman Waguspack. Waguspack is a yes, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes, Alderman Austin. Austin is a yes, Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa was a yes, Alderman Vegas. Vegas is a yes, Alderman Mitz. Mitz is a yes, Alderman Spisato. Spisato is a yes, Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a yes, Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is a yes, Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is a no, Alderman Riley. Riley is a no, Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes, Alderman Tony. Tony is a yes, Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a no, Alderman Capelman. Capelman is a yes, Alderman Martin. Martin is a yes, Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes, Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a yes, Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Silverstein is a no.
The ayes are thirty-six, the nays are fourteen, the matter passes. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President, I move that we reconsider that vote as well.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. The nays have it, the motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Waguspack.
Thank you, Madam President. I now move to concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee and adopt the 2022 Tax Levy, which was ordered to be deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of October twenty-fifth, 2021, as oh two zero two one dash four seven five nine, by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk.
Alderman Lasbada. Lasbada is a yes, Alderman Hopkins. Hopkins is a no, Alderman Dow. Dow is a yes, Alderman King. King is a yes, Alderman Hairston. Hairston is a yes, Alderman Sawyer. Sawyer is a yes, Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes? Okay, sorry. Alderman Harris is, Alderman Harris? Yes. Alderman Beal. Beal is a no, Alderman Zloski Garza. Zloski Garza is a yes, Alderman Thompson. Thompson is a yes, Alderman Cardness. Cardness is a yes, Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a no, Alderman Burke. Burke is a no, Alderman Lopez. Lopez is a no, Alderman Coleman. Coleman is a no, Alderman Moore. Moore is a no, Alderman Curtis. Curtis is a yes, Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a no, Alderman Taylor. Taylor is a no, Alderman Brookins. Brookins is a yes, Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a yes, Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is a no, Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes, Alderman Tito Lopez. Tito Lopez is a no, Alderman Malanato. Malanato is a no, Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes, Alderman Irvin. Irvin is a yes, Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a yes, Alderman Reboyas. Reboyas is a yes, Alderman Cardona. Cardona is a no. Alderman Waguspack. Waguspack is a yes, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes, Alderman Austin. Austin is a yes, Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a yes, Alderman Vegas. Vegas is a no, Alderman Mitz. Mitz is a yes, Alderman Spisato. Spisato is a yes, Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a yes, Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is a yes, Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is a no, Alderman Riley. Riley is a no, Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes, Alderman Tony. Tony is a yes, Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a no, Alderman Capelman. Capelman is a yes, Alderman Martin. Martin is a yes, Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes, Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a yes, Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a no.
The ayes are thirty-two, the nays are eighteen, the matter passes. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
I move that we reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The nays have it, the motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Waguspack.
Madam President, this concludes all unfinished business and I move to return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your hard work and passage of the FY twenty-two budget and the means to pay for it. Thank you. Next up, Committee reports, Chairman Vegas, Economic Capital and Technology Development.
Thank you, Madam President, members of City Council reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. On Monday, October eighteenth, 2021, the Committee held virtual meeting and recommends passage of the following items. Item one is an ordinance in support of a Class L tax incentive for owner thirteen fifty-seven property owner LLC of historic landmark property at thirteen twenty-nine to thirteen fifty-seven North Elston Avenue, Morton Salt Company Warehouse Complex located in the twenty-fourth and twenty-seventh Ward. I move passage of this item.
By roll call vote?
Sorry about that. I move passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Alderman Lasbada. Lasbada is a yes, Alderman Hopkins. Hopkins is a yes, Alderman Dow. Dow is a yes, Alderman King. King is a yes, Alderman Hairston. Hairston is a yes, Alderman Sawyer. Sawyer is a yes, Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes, Alderman Harris. Harris is a yes, Alderman Beal. Beal is a yes, Alderman Zloski Garza. Zloski Garza is a yes, Alderman Thompson. Thompson is a yes, Alderman Cardness. Cardness is a yes, Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a yes, Alderman Burke. Burke is a yes, Alderman Lopez. Lopez is a yes, Alderman Coleman. Coleman is a yes, Alderman Moore. Moore is a yes, Alderman Curtis. Curtis is a yes, Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a yes, Alderman Taylor. Taylor is a yes, Alderman Brookins. Brookins is a yes, Alderman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a yes, Alderman Tabarez. Tabarez is a yes, Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes, Alderman Tito Lopez. Tito Lopez is a yes, Alderman Malanato. Malanato is a yes, Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes, Alderman Irvin. Irvin is a yes, Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a yes, Alderman Reboyas. Reboyas is a yes, Alderman Cardona. Cardona is a yes, Alderman Waguspack. Waguspack is a yes, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes, Alderman Austin. Austin is a yes, Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a yes, Alderman Vegas. Vegas is a yes, Alderman Mitz. Mitz is a yes, Alderman Spisato. Spisato is a yes, Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a yes, Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is a yes, Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is a yes, Alderman Riley. Riley is a yes, Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes, Alderman Tony. Tony is a yes, Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a yes, Alderman Capelman. Capelman is a yes, Alderman Martin. Martin is a yes, Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes, Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a yes, Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a yes.
There are fifty ayes and zero nays, the matter has passed. Alderman Thompson on the motion to reconsider.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that we reconsider that vote.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, no. The motion fails. Alderman Vegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item two is an ordinance in support of a Class VII tax incentive renewal for property at one oh six to one thirty-six West Hundred and Eleven Street, located in thirty-fourth Ward. I move passage of this item by the same roll call in the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item three is an ordinance in support of a Class VI tax incentive for property generally located at thirty-seven hundred South Morgan Street for redevelopment as an industrial facility on vacant property located in the eleventh ward. I move passage of this item by the same roll call vote in the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item four is an ordinance in support of a Class VI tax incentive for property generally located at thirty-nine hundred South Normal Avenue, including thirty-nine twenty-six, thirty-nine forty, South Normal, five twenty-five, five forty-seven, and five fifty-nine West Pershing Road, and thirty-nine thirty-seven, thirty-nine forty-seven, thirty-nine fifty-five, South Wallace Avenue, to be constructed as a multi-tenant industrial facility by thirty-nine hundred South Normal TMG LLC located in the eleventh ward. I move passage of this item by the same roll call vote in the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item five is an ordinance in support of a tax levy, scope of services, budget, management agreement for special service area number twenty-four, Clark Morris Glenwood, located in the forty-ninth ward. I move passage of this item by the same roll call vote in the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items six through twenty-one are a series of ordinances in support of the tax levy, scope of services, budget, and management agreements. The following service areas were voted on collectively. Agreement for SSA number twenty, agreement for SSA number sixteen, agreement for SSA number four, agreement for SSA number five, agreement for SSA number nineteen, agreement for SSA number twenty-one, agreement for SSA number twenty-two, agreement for SSA number twenty-six, agreement for SSA number thirty-four, agreement for SSA number forty-three, agreement for SSA number forty-five, agreement for SSA number fifty-four, agreement for SSA number sixty-one, agreement for SSA number sixty-two, agreement for SSA number seventy-five, agreement for SSA number two. I move passage, I move for the passage of these items by the same roll call vote in the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Housing, Chairman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President, members of City Council reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held a meeting, a remote meeting on October fifteenth, 2021. The Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following. Item number one is the appointment of Luis Gutierrez as Commissioner, Chicago Housing Authority, term effective immediately and expiring July seventh, 2025, to complete the unexpired tour term of Craig Chico, who has resigned. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Economic and Capital and Technology Development and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Madam President, I want to speak on the appointment of Luis Gutierrez to the Chicago Housing Authority Board. Harold Washington appointed Luis Gutierrez as Deputy Superintendent at Streets and Sanes. And back then, that opened up some doors for him. In nineteen eighty-six, he received a great endorsement from Harold Washington after a court ordered special election, and Harold Washington donated over twelve thousand dollars to his campaign to see him get elected. Over those years, I had an opportunity to work in government and see a lot of things. In nineteen eighty-nine, during the mayoral election, Gutierrez endorsed State's Attorney, Richard M. Daley, who many of us supported. And he said, "I would have a great influence in determining the thrust and tone of the Daley administration's progressive and liberal agendas." Over the course of the years during that time, that did not happen. And over the course of the years at that time, that did not happen. And so, my thinking is now we coming back and when we talking about somebody who have, supposed to have progressive and good ideas and putting them over to Housing Authority, I think we could go and look for some more, more progressive people, more younger people. So, this appointment I do not support, and so I want to vote no on this appointment.
Forgive me, Alderman Moore, I just want to let you know this is a different Luis Gutierrez, and I do want to speak to this Luis Gutierrez, who is currently the Executive Director of Latinos Progressando, and someone that I think is a younger progressive individual, who I think will serve rather well in this capacity, someone that I've worked with over the years, and I'd urge you to reconsider, given that it's not the same individual you're speaking to, so I just wanted to correct that, thank you.
Can you turn on Alderman Moore's mic, please? Ladies and gentlemen, we are still conducting business here.
And I move to strike my previous comments and I'll vote no, vote yes on this item.
Chairman Osterman.
I'll just renew my motion to pass this item by the first favorable roll call of the vote of the Committee on Economic Development, Capital Technology Development, associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Item two is an as-is sale of vacant city-owned property to Diamond Realty Management Services, Inc., for conditional use of parking lot only, former gas station at sixty-nine forty-one South Stony Island. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item three is a negotiated sale of four vacant city parcels, city-owned property at sixty-nine oh three to sixty-nine eleven South Prairie to Raina Perry LLC. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item four is a negotiated sale of vacant city-owned property at sixty-four eleven to sixty-four thirteen South Cicero to GW Property Group LLC. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number five is a release and waiver and issuance to quit claim deed for any remaining city interest in the property at twenty-eight fifty-three East Seventy-Ninth Street by Jehovah's Witness Claim in adverse possession since nineteen ninety-three. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number six is a lease agreement with Chicago Board of Education for construction, maintenance, and use of a portion of vacant property at forty-six oh six West Marquette Road as additional parking for Moreno Azuela Elementary School at forty-seven oh seven West Marquette Road in the thirteenth ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number seven is a multifamily loan agreement for Chicago House Social Service Agency for Anglewood Family Housing Development, the Fourville Housing at sixteen fifty West Sixty-third Street. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez. Please proceed, sir.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you, Chairman. I just wish to rise in support of this item, bringing Chicago House to the southwest side, to the greater Anglewood community, to provide stable housing for individuals who are inflicted with HIV or AIDS. This will be a family living center, first of its kind, I believe, on our site of town, from a partner who is known on the north side, who has worked with the community, and will ensure that we are able to bring equitable access to families in Anglewood. And I want to commend your administration on working with Chicago House to make this a reality, and urge my colleagues to vote favorably for this item. Thank you, Madam President.
Chairman Osterman, you have a pending motion.
Yeah, make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Last item on the agenda is a substitute ordinance for sale of city-owned property within the Midwest and Ogden-Palaskey redevelopment area, Chicago Neighborhood Initiatives and Landale Christian Development Corporation, including remediation, for the development of future one hundred homes on the west side in the twenty-fourth ward. I think Alderman Michael Scott would like to make a few comments on this.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam President. As the Chairman said, this is a down payment on what we hope to be a thousand homes in North Landale. As you know, North Landale has been underpopulated since the late nineteen sixties after the King riots, and this is the first substantive development in the community in quite some time, and I want to thank you, I want to thank the Chairman, and especially the community that has worked so very hard to get to this point. Again, this is a down payment on what we hope to be a thousand homes, and it is a signature piece. If you actually look at the Washington Post this morning, it is on the front page of the Washington Post about how community and city came together to hopefully revitalize a community that has been under resourced for so long. Thank you again, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
My colleagues' remarks, and this is a significant down payment on the future to grow a thousand homes on the west side and hopefully a thousand new homes, and with the budget passage today, I think we will have the funds to help move that forward. So, with that, I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Chairman Harris. Next up, Chairman Harris. Agreed calendar.
Agreed calendar. I receive from the clerk a listing of items for the proposed agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and memorial resolutions offered offered by the following Alderman. Alderman Harrison. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. And Alderman O'Shea. I move these items from the agreed calendar in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, new business. Please call the roll beginning with the fifth.
Claims, free permits, licenses, exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations and traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. An exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Martin has proposed ordinance for amendment of the Mispah Code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional package group licenses on portion of West Lawrence Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Vegas and Alderman Mitchell have proposed resolution to call for hearings on diversity among corporate boards, which is referred to the Committee on Workforce Development. Alderman King has proposed ordinance for amendment of the Mispah Code, Section 9-64-206, by installing parking meters and regulating parking meter hours of operations on portions of South State Street, South Federal Street, South Plymouth Court, and West Polk Street, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Your Honor, that concludes all dramatic introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Mitchell, for approval of the journal.
Madam President, I am not aware of any corrections to the journal or move that it be approved.
All those in favor all those in favor of approving the journal signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. The motion is carried. Unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
I am not aware of any unfinished business.
Miscellaneous business, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
And the date and time of the next regular meeting.
Madam President, I've handed up an ordinance to the clerks setting the date and time for the next meeting.
Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance for the next regular meeting?
The next regular meeting of the City Council of City of Chicago shall be on Wednesday, November 17, 2021, beginning at 10:00 a.m. in the Council Chamber on the second floor in City Hall 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. If prior to then there is determination, an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to COVID-19 in accordance with Section 7E of the Open Meetings Act, the next regular meeting of the City Council will be conducted by video conference in accordance with applicable law. Any such determination will be posted on the City Clerk's website, along with an amended meeting agenda indicating that the meeting will be conducted by video conference by 10:00 a.m. on Monday, November 15, 2021. This ordinance shall take effect and will be enforced from and after its passage.
Alderman Mitchell.
Passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Omnibus, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to adjourn.
There being no further before this body, I move that we adjourn.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed say nay. The matter is, the meeting is adjourned.